Ready to session? Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Thurber, all in favor? We had the pledge of allegiance during our reorganization, so we can skip that. We have roll call.
And roll call's up to you. We can do it again, or we've done it.
Nobody else came, nobody is here.
No one.
Mr. Webanero did stay.
That's good.
He's going five more years of this. Uh, motion to approve the agenda?
And we do have to do it again.
Uh, Mrs. Mitchell, second.
Second.
Mr. Thurber, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approve the minutes of June eighth and June fourteenth, motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, I don't think anybody signed up.
I think we had anyone.
And I had no approval comments. So now, we certainly recognize through administrators and faculty staff, C E S staff, community sheriffs, photographer, audiovisual director, everybody does any assistance on June twenty-fourth on the campus graduation. Many hours were dedicated to planning and organization of this event in order that the hard work and accomplishments of our graduates could be solid. It was a great job done by all.
Fantastic. I love being right back on campus. I hope that never changes.
It's a little hot in here.
A little, well.
You could have been better than cooling it, you'd be.
Yeah, no.
We just got on sunglasses.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we could change to white robes. Oh, no, ooh, sorry, no white.
Maybe we change the direction of the stage. I put it by one of the few.
Or put, I think, uh, I think the principals talked about perhaps getting a canopy over the top. Not that I mentioned it. Uh, I did not. I acknowledge, uh, through McDonald's, Ross Archer, Stewart Shops for their food and drink accommodations during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Your continued district and the community support was greatly appreciated. Definitely. Superintendent, please.
So lots of good things. We're very busy around here, um, getting a lot of things done in regards to, um, getting our school ready for next school year. A lot of movement going on, um, but I will, um, give kudos to the, um, buildings and grounds, the custodial staff for the work that they're doing. A lot of classrooms are already cleaned. They're showing me today the second, third coats of wax on rooms, so that's always a positive thing. And, um, also a lot of work's been done, P A T, that's P A T members come into, um, the elementary school to help with organizing the Conex box that was being emptied, so a lot of help there. We also have, um, a lot of professional development going on in the district and, um, curriculum work being done in the district. So we had sixty-eight staff members participate in the online, um, professional development offerings from, uh, with Malone. So, um, it's our, our group and Malone are presenting. We have everything from circles to formative assessment to Google classroom tips. There's all kinds of different trainings, so sixty-eight teachers and nine hundred and seventy sessions of training have been offered, so, which is exciting. We also have about, um, many, I, I should have had a better number, but all of our buildings have teachers working on their curric- on, on curriculum projects, um, at every, every level, and a lot of work is, is underway right now or scheduled throughout the summer, so, um, what we, what we did was we looked at our, uh, strategic plan, and we looked at the different goals that, um, each building was looking at, things that were happening in their building, from curriculum changes and such, and, um, we're seeing that the, the teachers wrote proposals, and, um, they're working on those teams right now, so that's a lot of good work that'll help us get a good start for next year. Uh, another piece that's coming, um, for curriculum work, it's called, it's one of those ones which will probably drive us all crazy, is our new math series, um, that we have in the elementary school. So through kindergarten through fifth grade, we actually will be, um, using a new math program next year. It's called, um, Thank you, Into Math. Good thing you guys are here. I was like, ah, I was thinking Go Math. Anyway, Into Math. And we are, we have training coming up next month for all of our teachers that are participating in that, or will be teaching that, I should say. And, um, one of the, we're just getting emails today about pieces that might be backordered, so let's hope we don't have very many of those. But the thing is, good news is, it's all online, so hopefully we'll be able to make all that sweet. I also wanted to bring up, um, I know there's still a lot of conversation in the community, um, people coming to board members in regards to, um, in re- in regards to the E P T cards and, um, funding sources that we, that schools that were, um, that families received based on enrollment. And so it bothers me to think that we didn't do it right, if we didn't do it right. And so, and I realize that, um, I've called everybody that you can possibly call, and it's very, it's like the, um, New York State conundrum of, of places to call, and everybody tells somebody a different story. But a lady I respect a great deal, um, I have for years, works for Narick, you know, her name is Mary McHugh, and, um, she's assured me that the second, the second year, so the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, is still only based on how the students went to school, whether they were, whether the school was remote or not. And attendance has not fully been implemented, and that will be part of the reconciliation. I'll be happy to share that email with anyone who wants to see it. She, she was really, um, she was also very frustrated with the process and felt as though, I said to her, I'm like, my concern is, is if there's families that feel we made a mistake, because I'll say to everybody that we very well, during that, that year, it was difficult, because we had so many students entering in from home into a Google Meet, and, um, attendance was messy, so kids had to take their own attendance. So what she did recommend that I do, and I have, I'm working with our data coordinator right now, to pull the, the year's attendance and make any note notation if we have, um, a modality change. Meaning if a student, if we were in person and it was marked wrong in modality, then she said, make a note of that. They're not correcting that right now, but she said, if, when they create the mechanism to create that, I would be ready to go. So I just wanted to, I wanted to keep you updated, because I know that people reach out to you, and it's a very, it's, people are really questioning it. I think as we move on, you're gonna see it become even more, as, as we move into the twenty, um, one, twenty-two school year, I think it's going to be a little, it's.
That should be cleaner, right?
Well, cleaner, but it also could be a lot more compared, because what'll happen is, when you had students, for example, in the high school, who may have gone remote or needed to go medically remote, we were able to provide them with a, with another program, which was in, in school where they were coming in, like, similar to our P M school, where our elementary school, we didn't have that. So there's where you're gonna start to see that discrepancy, um, I think even more. But, um, I'm gonna continue to work with Derek to, to be prepared for any upload or change that I can do with, with, um, Level Zero with our data. I hope that makes a difference. It still seems to, and I said to her, I said, I see, I, I got an email from her, then I called her. I said, it still seems very, like, so discrepant when parents are telling me one thing, and they're saying, well, the student in this building had this much money added to their account, and this one didn't, and she said, Scott, I'm gonna tell you right now, it is everywhere, she said, and the problem is, is people are comparing and saying, oh, it's not in another school. She says, I am telling you right now, in New York, it's everywhere, she said, so. But I'm gonna keep working on it with her, and, um, but just so you're aware, we've taken this current school year, um, and we won't finalize our attendance until later. Um, it won't happen until probably, um, September is when we'll actually end up finalizing this current year's attendance. And administration is going through, like, a fine-tooth comb through every, everybody's attendance to the very best of our ability. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I know it's something that people have been asking you about, and I will, I will share, um, that email with the board, um, that I did get from Mary.
Well, twenty-twenty-one should have been somewhat consistent, because they were actually, you know, around two days, one day, and two days off. And it seemed varied all over, but twenty-one, twenty-two could be different because of the kids' attendance stuff.
So it's interesting, because when I called, um, O T D A, I spoke to them, and, um, they were very candid with me, and they made, they're like, I'll tell you, there's a lot of mistakes. Unfortunately, they feel like there's data lost, there's data, you know?
Yep.
Um, so, just so you're aware, I don't think it's all, if there's error, I'm gonna find it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but if there's any, but I don't necessarily feel that that's gonna fix it all, unfortunately.
And you have been pursuing it, and I know middle school and high school got, it seemed like, it'd be younger, the elementary grades that got mixed up, because one middle school kid would get it, and then the other, other one wouldn't, because they were based on the attendance of the elementary.
Well, and so the interesting thing is, is like, and, and that's what my, my belief was too, and then when Mary sent me this email just yesterday, telling me that she really felt that it's not based right now, they haven't even dug deep into attendance. And it's so funny, because you talk to different people, and if you, if you speak to different organizations across New York State, they'll say, oh, yeah, it's based on attendance. And so parents get frustrated with that, because they, they know what their kid was going to school and what they were. So it's definitely, but I will also include that in the other things I'm gonna include with the board, so they have that as a, just as a reference.
So can I ask you a couple questions, so I can clarify what people ask? The program is tied to the free lunches, so does that mean we qualify for free lunches next year?
We do.
Okay.
With that grant?
Yes, but I don't remember how long the grant is, because that was unclear, that I remember.
I don't know, but I can find out.
Okay. Um, so last year, the numbers are in, and we have discrepancies based on outgoing to the system. So any monies that they've received so far on their benefits cards.
They should keep looking.
Are, are based on the twenty-twenty, or, yeah, the twenty-twenty-one school year.
They're supposed to be based on, um.
But it's twenty-twenty-one.
The twenty-twenty-one modality.
Okay.
Not nineteen-twenty's over, they're done with that, but the twenty-twenty-one modality, meaning how did the school, was the school in person or was the school remote, that's how it was paid. And from what Mary's telling me, they have not gone into attendance yet for that year, and likely won't do reconciliation until fall.
And we didn't have free.
So for the twenty-one, twenty-two.
We didn't have free in nineteen-twenty.
Yeah. So for twenty-one, twenty-two, there's monies associated with that year that people will be seeing, but it won't be told after September.
They may see more money after September, after reconciliation.
If their child was in person, will they see money? Because they're receiving the free lunches here at school.
It's, it's based on modality, so if you were, I'm not positive, I, I don't really answer that question.
Because they're asking how they can get it, and they're, well, what if my kid was running, and I'm like, I don't know.
I, the only, all I can do right now is check and make sure modality was correct to all the children.
So if we did.
And that's what I'll keep doing, and I think that parents, even though they're frustrated, need to, need to be patient, because it does seem to be a messy process.
Well, the thing I keep explaining to them is something that was given to us, but we are not entirely sure.
Well, which is, I'm just not interested, we don't, like, the summer of twenty-one was based on the twenty-twenty-one school year, and some students got the three hundred and seventy-five dollars and some didn't.
Yep. So there could be a summer or not.
It was the summer of sixty-nine. It was twenty-twenty-one, the summer of twenty-one was based on the, the grade that the child was in, in twenty-twenty-one. Okay, so let's take my, I, I've got four grade children, two of them are in fifth grade.
In this last summer, are you in the old one?
Right. And they haven't received any monies, but the one that was in sev- sixth grade over in the middle school received three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So it's.
But I do believe you're right, when you say, when they were in elementary school, remember how we brought the elementary school back sooner?
Yes.
They'll have, they'll have a reduction, but it shouldn't be nothing.
Yeah, but what I'm thinking is, for, so for this school year, people opted to send their child to school, did not choose remote schooling, they may not see anything.
Maybe.
That's why I was wondering what the criteria was, because I, I'm like, I.
I haven't really, I haven't been, I, I haven't been told anything about the, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Um, but I, I just, all I know is I'm making sure, I know that it's based, it's going to have attendance written all over it. So that's why, before I approve attendance, I'm gonna make sure we're as, our enclose to perfect as we can be.
Thank you. So if you do find out the cri- that actually like the broad criteria is, that would be.
May have to do a podcast, huh?
I'm not sure I'd be the guy for it. I'd have to get somebody else to get it.
It's confusing.
It's very confusing.
Because it, it has to do with free lunches, it has to do with state trying to relieve the burden on families, and it has to do with attendance and the mode they were at school.
It has to do with the grant that we receive for free breakfast and lunch.
Correct.
So if, if we know what the.
You don't have to qualify, you don't have to qualify for free breakfast or lunch.
And that was, and they just, and the other question was asked, is how long is the lunch, uh, breakfast and lunch gonna be free for?
I don't.
I don't know.
I'll let you know.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
I appreciate it. I know that's a lot on your plate, but.
Do we know if that grant was three or five years, Randy?
Okay, I'll check with your name.
Yeah, I want to. I wanted to say it was five years.
I'm, I'm super grateful that we got it. I think it's a wonderful thing. I just wanna make sure that we're planning, and families can thank the board.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, but, but it's for everybody, and then you have people feeling the pinch right now with the cost of gas and everything else, so one less expense.
I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
It sounds like a plan.
All right, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Scott, I have a question. You mentioned the, the math program. Um, previously at a board meeting, there was a woman who was speaking about the math program, and was, was being trying to help rocket math.
Okay.
I'm curious, is this a replacement to that, a complementary to that?
So what we ended up doing, um, is a, um, we, we have a, a policy for textbook adoption, and so what ended up happening was the district looked at, um, different programs, so one was, I'm not gonna lump up my hat, but they did different, they looked at different programs that, that were, that were out there. Uh, we also piloted this particular program, the one that we're gonna be moving to, in our kindergarten classrooms for the year before, and the decision, you know, and again, like I said to you earlier, I think one of the things we're always working on is that level of consensus, right? And that was what we, as a school district, and the, and the building, the teachers in the building chose, was this particular one. But that could have been a part of, um, a program.
Like Rocket Math, the supplemental.
It's for math fluency.
Oh, but it goes along with this one?
No, it's, no, it's like a separate.
It was just to, for the math facts.
Because you see, like, you did really positive results.
They did, that's, yeah, absolutely.
That's something that I didn't.
It was an extension for those students who are not.
Who are in the.
All of them do it.
Yep.
Every student, it's just like a one-minute time math fluency.
But frankly, I added that because we found that they were so far behind. I think of, of the conversation was they were so far behind in their math facts.
And that's still maybe they're.
Kelly's presentation?
Yes, yes, yep.
Yeah, I think because they just found that they were behind in their math.
They're still, they're still going to do Rocket Math, right?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Um, yeah, I don't wanna go back to it.
No. We can hear.
Yes.
We don't.
I just wanted to take an opportunity on behalf of P A T to welcome and thank Mr. Webanero for, um, joining the board and, uh, coming out and helping with the school and serving the community. So welcome. Um, at the same time, I kinda wanna piggyback on something Mr. Starz was saying about the amount of, uh, professional development, uh, curriculum work. I know we have teachers in the, uh, uh, secondary building who are coming in for summer school, uh, so there's a lot of work being done on campus, uh, by P A T members. Uh, hopefully they're also getting a chance to rest, relax, recharge before September. But there is a lot of work being done, um, to the benefit of our students over the summer, so. I don't know, unfortunately, but it's not like people think where all the teachers are on vacation for a few months.
Yeah, definitely. No, we're thankful for that. As a profession, it has to go on, and you have to have P D, and that's one of the big pieces that we're missing years and years ago.
Bonnie, if I can just say one more thing, um, one of the things, just, you, not everyone was here, we mentioned it before in our other meeting, that, um, that was, we also want our administrators to recharge, so we can let them know that they wouldn't need to be here tonight for, for tonight's meeting. So they were very happy when I sent out the email, and I was like, sure. I told them if there's any questions, I'll be seeing them.
Yeah. Okay, we're on to consent agenda. Uh, any discussion on twelve A through J? I do wanna say I did appreciate the special education annual report. It gave me numbers and so on and so forth. This is Ravi do for that. That was helpful for me to get a clearer picture of special education.
It was surprising.
Yeah.
I, I've, as a non-special educator, as a non-educator, reading the kind of stuff in my book.
Yeah.
I have a question regarding the, the special education report. So it seemed like it was a, a combination of, here's what we're seeing, and here's the recommendations to go forward. So in our action as a board, is it accepting their recommendations to, as applied?
Yes, we, we accept the report.
Including in the whatever supporter allowances they would need for the recommendations.
Yes, yes, yes.
Those are done by special, special T people in those areas, to be sure what they need.
Yes. We don't usually see some comprehensive, like, I don't remember seeing quite that comprehensive, but this was really.
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, she states pending of, of, you know, board actions, so, so I liked it this way. It was clear to me.
I, I would like that format going forward, obviously.
I'll make sure I, um, whatever helps.
Yep, the format was much easier to read and, rather than all those pages.
Breaking up by the age or the.
Right.
Whatever it was, or.
Okay, so do I have a motion for A through J, twelve A through J? Motion, Mr. Thurber, second. Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thirteen, A through G, any discussion? Okay, may I have a motion to move A through G?
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Mitchell?
Second.
Second, Mr. Webanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried and opposed. Fourteen, A through K, any discussion? I have a motion. We have, we have, yeah, pages. This is good.
At least we didn't get all the way to Y or whatever.
No. Or A A, or X X or something.
Yes, but look at all the pages, okay?
Oh, you got a lot of hires. We got a lot of new members there, Mr. Mario.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Gray, second, Mrs. Mitchell, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Fifteen. Um, this is a discussion determining action related to changing, increasing the terms of office for board of education members. A few years back, we talked about possibly moving it to three, because we thought sometimes five was one of those situations where, you know, people giving, thinking about five years, and that three might be a more.
She's thinking it's something that's worth surveying, you know? Not just us, though. I mean, if there's people who have, out in the community who are gonna run, but they're like, five years seems excessive. Because again, if we're gonna not solicit people for five years, and we're not gonna solicit people for three years, I guess it really doesn't matter.
Uh, but what, what did Ms. say, would you?
You, you can, you can survey or whatever, but we wanna give a little bit of time, because you have to do it at your annual meeting next May. Which we had to start advertising sometimes at the end of March, and we've gotta give our attorney's office a little time to draft this. But it wouldn't be effective until then, not this May. Right, that's the thing. So whoever comes in, in May, still has that five-year term. And also, you can't just get rid of, so it doesn't, they, and what she does in proposition. He's for us to put forward to the voters, she has to stagger. So it doesn't mean necessarily either that another person won't come in for five or something. She can't have it so that multiple are going around the same years. You know, she has to look at who's just getting, who's getting done now, but also, in three years, who would be getting done. Because if a couple, five years and a couple of three years are all getting done, you can't let, like, four of you go all in.
Right.
So that's why we need a little bit of time to work through that.
It's worth, it's worth looking at.
Just as, as a comparison, you know of any other boards, like, that would be an interesting thing to see what three or four other school districts do.
There are, there's a whole, yeah, throughout the, the state, there are definitely three, your five-year and seven-year.
Mm-hmm. Some boards, boards are nine, nine people.
I knew some were.
I mean, it, it could be very overwhelming, too, to run every three years, to put your, get your petition out, run your signs out, try to solicit votes.
I mean, I can get both sides. You know, um, it could be a lot of turnover.
I mean, it's interesting to see, you know, both the community engagement for potentially shorter terms, but also, like you're saying, the higher the turnover is, that's gonna impact efficiency in operations.
Right, the less consistent the board will be. Nobody's saying that if you sign up for five, everyone will stay for five, you know, so it's not.
It's have it and you leave.
You know, you can leave, you know, and you have to, so, you know, I'm, I'm not, I, I would like to see a little research on it, just to see,
would it help, would it not help? I, I, I like the idea that there's a group that works, and if they don't work, then other people can pop in, but, um.
I think we've been very lucky to have a good cohesive board. I can understand if it's contentious. You might want, I, I can see that that might come in, I should do.
But this, this sub-eva that the board did, is there something similar that we could see for other districts in the area? Look at, look at sub-evals for three-year boards, or five-year boards, or seven-year boards, and see if there's difference.
No, no offense.
It'd be a poor situation, I.
I don't think.
Yeah.
No, but, so what we could do is, is ask Nisba, oh, you know what, I can put out.
Any public forum?
What's that?
Any, any sort of public.
So we also can do, if you wanted to do a survey, we'd have time in early summer, so I mean, we'd have time to even put it out to, to any private. We've got plenty of time.
We've got time before now spring.
Yeah.
Let me, I'm on the board president's forum.
President, yeah.
Board president, board president forum, and I'll ask.
Access to, but I just let Bonnie do every.
Yeah, I'll ask, um, about three and five years. And then some boards, too, will have, like, three, three-year terms and four, four, five-year terms. Yeah, a composition of some. So I'll ask on the board president forum and be able to get some information back to people.
I think this is the longest we've had, like, no turnover, because when Scott and I started, it was, we were elected, and then we ended up appointing the next two people on the list for open positions. So we had a lot of turnover that year. We took it personally and decided. Everybody's like, well, you guys.
Four years. I'm trying to hold it until next week.
Yeah, that's the target. I mean, I felt it wasn't because I was, so I took it personally. But again, people can leave, so. Scott's like, just, he's having none of the days.
But I think it is worth taking a look at, and maybe, maybe it's a combo, you know, a combination of three and five years.
I think, I think asking the board, so.
I'll ask the board, I'll ask the, the board president.
President forum, they have, like, presidents and vice presidents have access. You have a sign in, and then you can post questions, and other boards can answer. So we might get a sampling from the rest of the state, but I'm sure it's common knowledge of how other boards in this area are made up, right? You can just ask.
Okay, Scott can buy that out, and then, and Sherry can check with Nisba, too. She, she has her connections there, but I'll also ask the board president forum. So we'll get a little information. Here's nothing wrong with a combo, too, you know, the three, five, whatever, we'll see. And then we can get back to the public, too. Okay.
So we're just gonna collect information right now?
Yeah, we're just collecting, no actions needed right now. Um, new business, we have sixteen, we have to add the addenda on C and D.
We're gonna do each of these, though, same.
I'll do each separately. So any discussion on the merger for the girls' and boys' hockey?
Looks like we got most of the boys' team, I think it's fourteen, that they're anticipating or something.
Yeah.
The boys are going to Syracuse and girls are going to.
P H S.
P H S.
I'll surprise at the amount, especially for the boys, how many we have participating.
We have.
Hopefully. We have, how many are on the ice at any time? Am I?
I don't know, there's five.
Five, five.
Four, four, yeah. That's six, six, five plus one. Any other discussion? Okay, motion, Mr. Thurber, second. Mr. Hamilton, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Um, discuss and authorize any attendance? Is there anybody who would like to go to Syracuse in October to the, um, this was annual convention? Not in Syracuse, I know.
I can't do something.
I, I'll tell you, I did do the one in Lake Placid, and it was excellent, and I know other people have gone to them. You have City One and larger cities, but right now, I'm not ready to go to a larger city at any point. But the one in Lake Placid, no, I think they're going to come back to Lake Placid.
I think so.
Yeah, it was excellent.
I didn't see any, like, that they have a, they have an online option. I don't believe they're going to, if they get enough.
No, last year I did some.
Well enough in person, they're gonna leave.
Last year I did some of the online stuff, but, you know, I don't think so.
I mean, I'd love to go, but I just can't, it just doesn't.
Okay, so, do we need to have an action? No one is interested in going?
Right, yeah, no one's going.
No one's going.
We can just do his discussion.
Okay.
Okay. But it doesn't mean someone can't change your mind later and then we'll get through.
Okay, and the law conference, we have Mr. Webanero, Mr. Hamilton, myself, and, um, doing it virtually, twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. I can come here, so that, um, if you wanna come in and listen to some, and Randy, I know in the past, Randy and I and, um, superintendent have listened to it in here, and if you do wanna do it from home, you can do it from home or from your workplace. So just make sure Sherry knows, so it'll be. And it's one, it's eight to twelve, I think, and the other one is eight thirty to eleven.
So, so just the three this time?
So I can come from my workplace, right?
Yeah. Don't dump the computer.
I'm just asking.
To make sure the camera's off and the sound's off, and you go fish. Did you? Did you think you wanted to? Service is sketchy out there.
Just how's the internet out there? Oh, that's right. See all those little fishies underneath the water there? Okay, so we have the three, do we, we don't need any action?
Oh, yes, my policy can, we're supposed to all accept.
Okay. So, may I have a motion for the three of us to authorize and represent the board motion? Mr. Hamilton, second, Mr. Webenero, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Sherry popped in a couple of, a few pages of policy to us, just to start our review, right? Um, to start our review. And, um, on the zero, zero, zeros and the.
So, what Mr. Storms and I had discussed is whether the board might be interested in doing these are open to the public. And we didn't know if none of you had interest to do them now that it's summer, to try to do them a few hours during the day in July and August instead, and see if we can get going on a few of these. We were thinking, starting with the zeros and the one thousand series. And see if. So, my God, you're killing me. I have like Monday, Wednes, every other Monday and every other Wednesday. All of them. Just because they can take time, and if you, you worked all day, and then we start that sometimes at six, seven at night, it can go till ten, eleven, and.
I think we have to look at, you know, we start looking at the policies, I think, that, I mean, I know that there's been many projects, policies in the past. And I think that we've got to get to a place where we accept quite a few of them from NISBA and then live with it a little while. If there's a specific one, and a perfect example is like the one that we shared later, sexual harassment, that wasn't updated. As, as they come in and they're updated, um, then we can, but I think it's going to be really important that, like, for example, when we, 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 um, you accept a series of them, you also say that the old series is, this is the only policies that we're following. Because there is a, I'll say to you, there's a wild number of policies. So, I think that in an organizational way, it would be important to look at a series of them. You know, and we approve a series of them and take out old ones and just delete and take them off.
So, just going back in time, I mean, over the past four years, we've done this every year, same, same.
Apparently, everybody does the extra.
I promise you to get to the end.
Yeah. Part of the problem was we switched from NISBA, well, we had the school attorney throwing some in.
Yeah.
We had an interim superintendent putting some in, and then, and then we switched to hearing one. Now, we're back at NISBA. We did, we went to NISBA during the pandemic, because remember, we all met and we had series, one thousand series and one thousand. Which is what you've got a lot of now, but, um, they make notes. We just never finish. You have to decide, do you really want them all, and, and then they'll highlight, you can do this or that. So, we sent them to NISBA, and then NISBA sent back, so.
Yeah, so on the, on the, the four zeros, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, they recommended something on mission and vision. When I looked at that, I thought, I really like to go back to strategic plan on, on that. Rather than saying that we're just going to arbitrarily change our mission and vision because we had a strategic planning committee. And then, do we have an equity-inclusive diversity committee? Didn't, didn't we do that?
We're starting.
That's right, so.
Where, where, there's a group of teachers and staff members that participate in studies.
So, I know that I have a hard time working out during the day, and I know it's easier for you guys because you're here. I know I work during the day most of the time. I don't know what everybody else is doing.
I'll be in October.
You work during the day, right? You work during the day.
I, I know.
Okay, he's a flexible guy. So, right now, like, I know normally I have more availability through the middle of August, second week of August break down, I don't have a lot during the day. I'm happy to help when I can.
That's okay.
But we're going to have a limit, and if you need to have more than one or two people.
Yep.
You have to have four. Then you're going to be down to like three or four.
I'm finally doing whatever way the board wants to do it. It doesn't have to happen, it doesn't from me, it doesn't have, I mean, no, whenever you want it.
Well, I think we've, you've sent these out, maybe if we can get some comments on it, because when I went through them today, I thought the mission, vision needed to go back to strategic plan. The equity inclusivity and diversity, I think we're fine on, and then sexual harassment one, we had something from Jackie, so we're going to have Jackie take a look at those two. That's what I found out in the, in the zero, zero, zeros.
So, I think that when you see that, particularly the one on sexual harassment, that was from NISBA, and that was when we, last year, we heard that ours was not updated and NISBA's was not updated, so we can take the one out of NISBA.
Yep.
Put the new one in and.
We should probably have a school attorney look at the regulations and the exhibits that go along with it, though, since we've updated our statement from.
Yes.
Because I spoke, well, I.
So, right now, we, we.
So, we can do night or afternoon, um, just, and you guys can write down and make your own comments. Just remember, because this is public, you can't bounce back and forth in your own emails saying, I think this should have a session, this should have a, because that is actually public development of them.
Yep, that's okay.
Can you just, if we're going to do it like on a day or afternoon, can you just, we'll set like one day, and then, like, we're going to do the zeros this week, ones next week, twos next week.
Zero, they're going to be.
I'm choosing that as.
But I'm saying they're going to be quicker than that.
Well, well, we were thinking the zeros and ones together, and then you're going to want maybe a couple of weeks to review, there, there's a lot of information in there, and you're going to really want to, because we don't want to keep changing this either.
This is also public, right, so the public needs notice for which section.
Yeah.
Yes.
And because every board back then, member back then wasn't on the committees, you may have input that you want on these other series.
Yes.
Mr. Webenero may have new input now on. Okay, so if you want to do those zeros and the ones, you want a day that most of us can be.
I think it would take a couple of hours.
Okay.
They, these are not.
Eight, a couple of hours on a set, set day.
Yeah, these are not, these are not that.
No, they're not in depth as much as some of the other series. I get that. So, I'm picking up my calendar. What are you thinking?
We need four people.
Yeah.
Is that the four members of the board, or is that?
Yes. Right, we need four members. Because you have to vote on whether to accept the policy or change them. Okay, I.
I mean, you can do committees, but that's, then we keep changing policies as other board members and every, we feel our board should have an equal opportunity to have the input on each. No, I, I like the idea of doing this, aren't people make their decisions right off, as opposed to letting them set?
So, six, like, six to eight, one night, sometime in there.
When, what day, like? How soon would you like to meet?
Look at yours, because yours is.
Nights aren't bad. Definitely evenings are much better for me right now.
So, are you, do you want to do, are you saying July you would like to do it?
That's fine.
Okay.
I, I'm looking at everybody else. I mean, if evenings are, if days are better for everybody else, do days, please, don't try to. And whenever you've got time to review those two series you're setting, you know. Right, that's the homework priority. Yes, because anywhere there's highlights and suggestions and stuff, you're going to want to give yourself time to review those.
Is this what we should do in the document or just?
I think.
I don't think I have access to that document to mark it out, so.
Right.
No, no, this is, this is my marking up today.
If you mark it, start marking it up in a share, then we'd have, that one, that should be kind of policy development, so we can't have you suggesting, and, but you can do it on your own.
And then when you come together.
Because that's, that's part of it.
And I could probably share a working document with each of you alone, or you.
Okay.
Do it in your, that, that would help you, that would, if you want to go and make yourself notes and highlight.
We can't actively collaborate on it because.
Right. I wanted to take, like, actually write down the page number or whatever.
Yeah, I actually just, I made a copy of it.
That's why.
What about the week of the twenty-fifth?
Or sooner July?
Of July. Ninety-six.
Six to eight, yeah.
Okay, I get it. I don't, I don't know. Not the, uh, not the twenty-sixth, okay, or, or the twenty-ninth, not on Friday night.
On the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh?
Okay. Wednesday, twenty-seventh, if they make out.
Six to eight on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, that's zero of the policies.
Zero of the ones.
Mm-hmm. Would this be a, a good time to do, uh? No, I guess maybe when we have a retreat to check who would want to do the committees, too, when we have a board retreat.
Yes.
And so, staying on PAT is very.
Yeah. We want to throw that into nights because we want Mr. Webenero to kind of get a feel of everything and first and.
Yep.
For a retreat, you mean?
No, for deciding now for committees, like, who's going to be on negotiation, you know, who's going to replace Ms. Moreno on certain items in whether somebody else wants to move from.
Is that something you want, that we would typically do at a meeting like this?
We can, yeah.
Okay.
So, we could do it in August or?
Let's do it in August, because I'm, I guess I'm not prepared, but I'll be prepared.
Okay, so we got that.
We need to take action on it.
We need to take action, yes.
Yes.
So, do we have a motion that we will meet on July twenty-seventh, sixty-eight, to review policies zero, 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 and?
Zero, zeros.
Right.
And to the one thousand. Okay, do I have a motion? From Mr. Webenero, second, Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, anything else?
We need to staff the board three.
Well, that's my other question about.
Yeah, I think you said that, that of course.
Yeah.
And we didn't have anybody else for public comments, so, okay, and then.
So, the other thing about, you know, when we talk about board retreat, we have to be mindful, too, of goal setting.
Yes.
Like, setting has to be something that we do in public as well.
Yes, yes.
Um, but I also feel that there's enough, there's probably a lot of things we can also still cover when we.
We can draft our goals, though, right? We just can't accept them. I think, so I think the whole, whole process, I think you can give suggestions of what you want to see.
Well, in, in conclusion, with, in collaboration with the superintendent. And then we also look at the leadership team. That goes with the committees.
Thank you.
Right?
Let me just find, I sent recently a statement that the attorney had, well, some past we've reviewed our handbook.
Which we never came to conclude.
No, we didn't finish that. What else did we talk about last, apparently?
Well, last time we worked, we worked with the leadership team, remember, we were into.
So, it can be for the purpose of gaining education, training, developing or improving team building or communication skills, or considering interpersonal relations, but anything that has to do with mission, vision, goals, including development, is public discussion.
Okay.
Is what we got from our attorney's office.
Okay, so the development of goals has to be, okay. And I know in our self eval, they have some, we come up with some objectives. You can't really say they, it says goals, but they're really objectives on what we, we do, because the goals has to be out in public meeting. But it's on some of the things, it's how we operate as a board, so I've sent you a lot of information.
We can discuss our self eval in a, in a board retreat, and how do we better meet the objectives that we, or why are we deficient in them, and how to work as a team to.
So, is there, we can probably make it from that, then?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, so do you want to set a retreat, and how do you want, how would you like to make that work? Do you want to? I'm, I'm not sure I've done it in the past, I guess.
We've done it a couple of ways.
We've done it right here.
We've had it out and about, we've done two nights, we've done one day.
Remember, we did one, one time, we were butcher wild with, um, Sweethearts and Heroes, and then we were at Living Goods with the administrative team. But I think we really need to sit down and take a look at where we are and what we're doing and.
And even though it is a meeting of the board, but not a public meeting, we do, just so you all know and remember, we do usually advertise it out to the public. Um, as a simple board retreat, just to let them know so that, for example, if someone comes here, or if you decided to do it outside of here, and they would be like, why were there seven board members of Peru in a back room, wherever, or, and we didn't know about it? So, we advertise it out, even though we don't technically have to.
We do something very, we can do something very simple here, you know, we, we've ordered.
Yeah.
Just something simple to do here and.
We, I kind of think and have a conversation about these other topics, if you want to do it that way. Do you want to do it in August, since it's, you want to do it in the first week of August, possibly?
What time to do it? Do it in evening like we usually do?
It might have to be something like four o'clock, too.
If we're doing another special meeting with policy, do you want to tie it to that, or do you want it separate? We just said we're doing it solely the twenty-seventh, so we're, if we're doing it the first week of August, we're not going to hide it close to go through the two thousands or whatever after. Is that a correct assumption? Yes, but I didn't know if you wanted to do a couple of, in August or not, for policy. We don't have to.
Do you want to do it like on the eleventh? Or do you want to do it in the week, the week, the first week, or we could do it on the third?
Not do it on the third. Fifty-four years being married. Not do it. Not that there's a big celebration anymore.
Do you like to make it to fifty-five?
I'm out of time at four through the tenth, so the eleventh.
Eleven is late. I work until five-thirty or five o'clock, so.
Um.
If I'm done at five.
So, the board meeting on the ninth, you're, you're out of time on the ninth?
Okay, I'm out of time.
Okay, so the eleventh, we could do it?
Yep. You said you're, you're gone still on the day?
Yep.
All right, I will be officially late that day, so if you're starting at before five o'clock.
Well, we can make it five.
We can make it five.
Come in at four-thirty to have something to eat and.
Sarah's not allowed to eat, because she doesn't need it. So, you want to do, you're.
You can't eat anymore.
That's fine, I don't need it, obviously.
And do it here?
The eleventh.
The eleventh here?
Yeah, so what time?
Four-thirty.
And as a reminder, I may be late and I might be really late, just putting it out there already.
We'll just assign you two lots of different.
No, I just like to stay out of committees, I'm on a great, put the work in, and most of the work. Okay, so we're going with four-thirty on August eleventh in the community room, is that?
Yeah.
July is the seventh and eighth?
It's like four, usually it's about four hours.
So, nine o'clock? You don't have to, that's, once you get into it, you can do it, you don't have to set out walk.
Okay.
So, would you want to do a motion second for that?
I'll see if I can leave early. Okay, I have a motion to, um, have a board retreat on August eleventh, beginning at four-thirty, motion, Mr. Thurber, second, Mrs. Graves, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, um, anything else?
Sure.
No public. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Thurber, second, Mrs. Graves, all in favor?[1791.72]